The common council of the city of Glendale is now in session, but everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Alderman Bailey is going to lead us.
Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Public comment Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on the agenda, but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to address the mayor and council on a non-agenda item? All right, seeing none, we'll move on then. Sorry, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Eric Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Bukovic. Alderman Doherty.
Here.
Alderman Galhard.
Here.
Alderman Bailey.
Here.
Alderman Schmalsling.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw.
Here.
You. We have six items on the consent agenda. I'm going to ask that we pull item F. So can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda of items three A through three E, please?
Almost.
About woman Shaw, second about him and Schmalsling. Without objection, the consent agenda will be considered adopted. Hearing no objection, we're going to move item three F into new business. It'll be the last item of new business. All right. So we'll start with our new business first was is just a discussion about no Moe May. So I just wanted to open this up to get feedback from members of the council. I've had quite a few people contact me with very positive comments. I've had a couple of people contact me with quite negative comments. There's apparently a few people that are that are very value their lawns and didn't like the fact that neighbors participated in M O A. But by and large, I would say it was probably 12 to 15 positives and two negatives. So I'll open up to members of the council. If you've heard from anybody who wants to go first, Alderman Doherty.
Only got I didn't really get any positive comments. I had three people complain to me. Same same complaints we saw in writing from other people.
What am I going to book it?
I got mostly complaints too, but the the complaint wasn't necessarily about the no Moe May. It was about everybody was doing something different and nobody was exactly clear on what it was and it wasn't planned out or or sent out properly.
What was Charles? I got one complaint and one person who was very appreciative, actually two people. I know one person reached out to me in advance who wanted to have no Moe May. So the the main concern was about just seeds that will go from a Nomo lawn into one that is more manicured. I think that there might be mitigations to that. So but we can talk from the favor, sorry. We just need these longer, that'd be the easy fix. The thing that they said is that they did feel like that it did inspire more wildlife in their lawn and and the such. And also they they did feel that it was easier frankly as well. So it was positive in both regards, considering our our climate and how it's harder to take part in your outdoor activities in the month of May.
Yeah, I had a few complaints, I guess, the the, you know, the most vociferous one was from someone who, you know, maintained their lawn and has for years and was, you know, living next to somebody who, you know, let it go. And it was the same type of concern about, well, are, you know, are these dandelion seeds going to now, you know, take up residence in my lawn? So.
What was John?
I had a handful of each, and ultimately what this kind of reminded me of is when I first got on council and my predecessor did a lot of natural landscaping, so same people, same type of complaints. So I just explained it's just for the month and try it out.
I had very much the similar experience, couple complaints, couple people who were appreciative, but nothing.
The next door post I had had a lot of comments and a couple of them were negative, but overwhelmingly, you know, most people were really happy we'd done it. So. All right, so I guess that gives us some feedback, you know, obviously we've got time to think about what we do in 2023. Anybody want to add any additional comments or anything?
I think there ought to be some discussion for it next year. It kind of came up on us quick, the way it came up and everything that was some other comments I heard. So I think for next year, we should be talking more about it ahead of time and either do it or don't do it as a community that we made our mind up.
Sure. And most of our neighboring communities actually did participate as well. So, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I I think the the pilot kind of worked in the sense that it was gave us feedback, kind of gave us an idea what we look at. I think it'd be interesting just to see how we can communicate out to prevent like property maintenance complaints and perhaps the neighborly conflict. I thought that the council's decision to kind of take some of our learnings from the natural landscaping was probably a good idea. So like if you had a neighbor that was participating when that wasn't, then, you know, you could potentially do some kind of like cut back and from their lawn a bit to to prevent the spread of the seeds and such. But I know that overall, this is how you learn and put together good policy. So I thought it was overall good experience and I tried it out. And I was worried about all sorts of things like would I be able to get my lawn tractor through it? Pretty much I just zip my lawn and I actually liked the little flowers that were growing weren't all dandelions. So I'm not as paranoid about my lawn anymore, actually. So I think maybe that's something we can all take back and see if what matters to us. All right.
I made it till the 23rd. I did have to mow my lawn because I was hosting a bunch of people in my house. So I wouldn't let my lawn look the way it was with people coming over. So.
And I might cut a path down to the garden because that was the only thing and maybe a place for the dog to do his business a little easier. So well, you know, learnings, exactly.
Okay. All right, any other comments on M O A? Yep. I'm Billy.
I did speak to a couple of neighbors about it being not in city property this year, but maybe being evaluated in the future. And there was more concern about what would the city look like for people driving down Good Hope specifically if it wasn't maintained? So it was just a concern.
Valid, but yeah. All right, any other? Okay, next item that is a North Shore Library capital improvement costs. So I was asked by Alderman Schmelsing about where we stand with fundraising. I did speak with President Walney today at the ICC meeting. He is prepared to come before us at our next meeting and talk with us about where they are. I will tell you, none of the other three communities want to put a penny into this of their of their tax money either. So we're all, everybody is incentivized to have the fundraising cover the cost of finishing out the library. So um, so what I wanted to do today was basically get questions from you that I can pass to President Walney. He'll come back to us in our next meeting. But before I do that, I did want to say there are a number of large donors. Theirs are going to be structured giving. So remember when we did the park, we had a number of agreements that lasted, you know, a certain number of years. If if that is the direction they go, the well, that is the direction they're going to go. They're going to be written agreements for a certain amount of money, but they may be paid out over a couple of years or a certain number of years. So if you ask, if if you're the condition upon which you're willing to vote for me to sign the permanent agreement that the next meeting is, how many zeros are in the bank about, you know, a number with a certain number of zeros? Then, you know, that's not the, you're not going to get the answer you're looking for. What you're going to get is, you know, we have commitments, these commitments are in writing, you know, here's how much money there is. And and the level of which the fundraising is moving forward. So Alderman Doherty.
I'd ask that we have a spreadsheet that actually shows where commitments are, what they stack up to, to actually get some real math. Because I feel like in the past, we've been talked to a lot, but I haven't seen anything that really ties out, if you will, to where they're at.
The questions you want? I think that we should amend that agreement to make language clear that Glendale and perhaps all four of the communities are not going to contribute any money to the capital construction of the North Shore Library. So it's absolutely clear, you know, we're not going to give the money to build the library. What was Schmelsing?
A couple of additional thoughts, I echo both those points, I think. It'd also be interesting to see since we're supposed to see the, you know, preliminary budget to complete construction. I what is is it? I'm just hearing four million. I don't know anything more distinctive. I would hope they have something for the long that we could potentially see more than the directional vision of what the library would look like at this point, too, considering they're asking us to go all in for what it was at 20 years. So I think that's key. Also, the contingent statement was that our four communities have negotiated and agreed upon the timeline and preliminary budget. I I think it's not clear here. When it says budgeted, also implies, you know, the funding agreement. But to what Alderman Doherty just said, it's, you know, really, what does that mean for us contributing? So I'd like to know who's actually paying the capital upfront, like, how is that going to be?
Bonding.
Bonding, yes. So like, because I'm not expecting us to bond for something that we have a future, you know, potential donation stream, but we don't necessarily are, we're not the the agent of that.
And we we wouldn't be able to be in the next year anyway, because we are bonding for the fire department.
Exactly.
The other communities are paying us.
Yeah. And and so I think that's key is just so if we can get something confirmed to that extent, as Alderman Doherty said, that'd be make me feel much better. And also, I just wanted to call out when I looked at the new agreement, we would need to, as the four communities all unanimously agree to a capital budget for the library. So if there was anything that would come out of a shortfall, how was that handled? Because right now, my position is if there was a shortfall in two, three years, because someone backed out and isn't going to continue the donations, I would not be, if I'm still here, planning to vote in favor of said agreement to fund the library. How would that be handled? So these are all contingency things, because I just don't have visibility to how this is all going, other than I I get weekly updates from other departments, but not from the library.
I'm going to be sending to talk with President Walney. All this. All right, sound the one then. Item four C is review and approval of the 2023 to 2027 capital improvement program. I'll turn it over to the city administrator.
We've spent a number of meetings discussing the capital improvement plan in front of you, hopefully as the final draft. It includes two modifications from the last one. The last one included funds for speed humps and speed bumps. This one includes $100,000 in years 2023 and 24 for traffic calming. And then every year after that, $20,000 in all remaining years for the same purpose. In addition to that, previous capital improvement plans have included $1.6 million for the local share of Silver Spring resurfacing. That assumes that I believe a $5.6 million grant would be awarded for that program, actually $6.4 billion grant and the city's contribution of $1.6 million over those two years.
And we do have confirmation. Um, Congresswoman remarked that we had removed it and then because oh, that same earmark has been approved and has been submitted again on our behalf. So. So that's what this is, that's what the city administrator is referencing is we have a share of it. We have to pay for if we get the federal earmark, so. All right. Any questions then about the capital improvement plan? Alderman Bukovic.
And I want to make it crystal clear that the humps are the speed bumps or speed. No, not even calming, I'm talking about the speed under tables that I asked Rachel and it's been in the capital plans for five years now. Now we're going to be looking at seeing if that is the right route to go. But if it is the route to go, I want to make sure that because we did it the right way and waited five years that that money will be there for those three to four areas.
Intend of that money is for traffic calming devices, whether there's a speed bumps, speed humps, bump outs, whatever the council would like to do with those funds.
I am making this clear again. I don't care what happens and I want those things which they were earmarked for those particular force areas. I waited five years, put it in there and waited until it got up that though that money will be available if those neighbors and with the engineering, because we're working together to see if that is the best thing to do. But it's going to be there for those four areas. Glendale Avenue, Marne, Lydell and Lydell, where the the racing track is over there.
Yes, funds will be there for those, that's the intent of the capital plan.
All right, I'm just making sure.
All right, any other questions about the capital improvement? Alderman Schmelsing.
A similar note, I I appreciated the the meeting that we had to talk through the the similar concerns about traffic calming on range line. So I I like the flexibility that this gives so that we can choose the things that make the most sense. But again, I I do want to make sure we do have enough to spread around, so to say, to the various places that have been highlighted earlier. I I did also note the sidewalk on Green Bay from Bernard to Good Hope kind of offsets what prior was going to be the potential trail from the Oakleaf Trail to Milwaukee River Parkway. I think the sidewalk on Green Bay from Bernard to Good Hope is a better use of those funds. So I think that was an excellent recommendation to make that change, even though it isn't in my district, but it's right up the road. So connectivity there is important to those two neighborhoods. I think those were the two main things that I I noted, so. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, any other questions? I get a motion that of the 20 capital improvement program as present. Oh, well. Alderman Doherty is her second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Bailey, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, I. I pose no motion carries. Next, item four D, review and approval, Milwaukee Audubon Society's request for an open burn permit to maintain the Indian Prairie.
So we've received an application for the Audubon Society for an open burn permit at the property right over here. That is a city owned property. The application has been submitted to the North Shore Fire and Rescue. The map of the area is included, it doesn't include the whole property, it just includes the prairie on the front. And that the motion would be contingent upon review and approval of the North Shore Fire and Rescue, as well as notification of all residential properties within 200 feet. Initially, I put in mailed notification, but I figured why cost them, what is it 39 cents a stamp now? 53 cents, wow. If they wanted to knock on doors or just put it on their doors, that would be appropriate.
What was John?
Is this something we have done before in the past for this particular area? Okay.
Multiple times.
I just want to make sure that.
Haven't done a burn in about seven or eight years, but yes, they they were historically doing burns about every four or five years.
Because I know it's also the same on the same that's in control.
Going to have a prairie, you have to burn it. So originally it was put in, that was the intent.
All right, can we have a motion then to approve the Milwaukee Audubon Society's request for an open burn permit? Move bottom and Schmelsing is her second. Second, bottom and Gilhard. Any further discussion? All in favor, I. I pose no. Next is review and approval, request to approve a waiver of the limitation on the number of dogs and cats. This is from Lisa Hirschman at 2520 West Michael Drive. Hi. Sure, so when you speak, because this meeting is being recorded, you'll have to speak directly into the microphone. And these microphones are tricky. If you turn your head and start talking to somebody over here, it doesn't often pick you up. So if you're looking at us, you got to duck directly into the microphone still.
I understand.
Got it, thank you.
Um, did you want to documentation I have from my vet about records that I've?
Do they have any?
I I looked at it in the packet, it's very thorough, so I think it's, I don't have any concerns.
Do they have any question? All right, so we have a request here to approve the waiver of the limitation on the number of dogs and cats. Can I have a motion to approve? Move by who? Alderman Schmelsing. Second, about one Bukovic, any discussion?
Just curious, I've never seen one of these come forward before. So I I I guess I thank you for doing your due diligence and how did this?
I was like, I want I didn't want to step on any toes and make sure I did it right, because I'd rather do that, do it that way than get in trouble on the back end.
I was, I was curious enough like how this came to be, so now I understand.
There's there's an ordinance.
You you know your rules and I appreciate that.
Yep.
All right, any further discussion?
I'll just mention for Alderman Schmelsing, this is the second one that's come up in my tenure.
And you've been on the council for 16 years. All right, all those in favor, I. I posed motion carries. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, next is item four F, review and approval, First Amendment and Restated Development Agreement for Bay Shore Town Center Amendment. I think this just changes the dates, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So as you, as you recall, we, the the CDA approved an extension on the on the TIF agreement for an additional three years because of the tech college extension. All this does is change the dates. Does anybody have any questions or anything? All right, can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Move out to Miguel Hart, second about the minority, any discussion? All in favor, I. I pose. All right, next is review and approval, application for architectural changes for general capital. This is for the Glendale marketplace and it's for landscape modifications and I'll turn it over to staff.
John, do you want to handle this one?
So Glendale Marketplace, you're probably all familiar with it, it's over on Port Road, it's about 20 years old. The landscaping was installed originally with the original landscaping. There's a number of Arbor Vitae that are parallel to Port Road that face between the parking lot. The Arbor Vitae have grown irregular, some of them are very tall, some are shorter. The developer would like to replace the Arbor Vitae's, update the landscaping, they're going to be using some Carl Forester grasses, adding some magnolias, some other plantings at the ground level that will open up the area. So you'll see a little bit more visibility, some of the shops in the back, actually, at this point, you can't really see that they're there. So help them also. This is in a planned development district, but planned development districts do allow for minor modifications. Planning Commission did determine this was a minor modification, so it just needs a final approval from council.
Questions? All right, can we get a motion then to approve?
So moved.
Move bottom and Galhard, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Bailey, any further discussion?
Is that the, yeah, just that those those Arbor Vitae are getting very large. So I I think they typically look great up front, but then get a little bit monstrous over time, so.
I'm just added that so the merchants in that center were worried that that people driving by couldn't see that they were there and that's why they want to take them down, so.
I love Glendale and all the trees, but in some places, some pretty grasses are probably beneficial instead.
Deciduous are, there are deciduous trees mixed in there, they will remain.
Right.
Yep, that canopy will still be there.
Push it already. Okay, the discussion. All in favor, I. I pose no. Uh, next one is review and approval, application for site modification for the We Energies for offense and landscaping modifications. And I'll turn it over to staff.
This application is also very similar to the marketplace, We Energies is in in a planned development district that dates back to the late 90s. We Energies has had some situations on their property from homeless camping in doorways to people wandering around to some thefts in the parking lot. Parking lot actually is a half in the city of Milwaukee and half in the city of Glendale. They'd like to put a fence around it, landscaping, they will have a controlled gate system. We have coordinated the access of the area with the North Shore Fire Department. So there will be an access component there. Also speaking to the applicant, they some of their documentation, some of their things have been reported to police, other things they just have documented on their own. And so staff has suggested that they might work a little bit more closely with the police department from that perspective. But essentially, it's an ornamental black fence with the majority of the landscaping will be in the city of Milwaukee.
Oh, the fence, will that be Justin Glendale or is it going to cross into Milwaukee?
So across into Milwaukee, so go around the parking lot, but the parking lot, you think of the parking lot as a rectangle. The municipal line literally is going diagonally through it. So at any point in when you're in the parking lot, you're probably going back and forth across the line multiple times.
They do understand that. Okay, for approved.
Milwaukee has already approved it, they don't have to go, they don't, their process, they had it approved very quickly, so.
All right, any questions from members of the council? Can I get a motion then to approve the site modification for We Energies, please?
A move.
Second, Alderman Doherty, second about Schmelsing, any discussion? All in favor, I. I pose no motion carries. Next item is a recommendation from legislative and judiciary to consider an application for a class B liquor and class B beer license for the flip flop tiki bar at Bay Shore. Uh, let's see, you you just chaired the the committee, do you want to tell us what happened in your committee meeting?
Discussion came up talking about the complications that are involved with this site and their desire to have a larger area some of the time and a smaller area most of the time. So what I think what we approved in our, what we approved in our committee was to allow them to have the class B to to licenses. They'll have to reestablish dates that they want to have the wider area in use and that they can do, because we gave that temporarily before, while they're under the provisional rule we passed. So this was the recommendation from our committee was to grant them the class B liquor license and the class B multi beverage license and bring it to city council.
So they'll have to come back again with a list of dates, okay? All right, so that's the recommendation out of the committee, is there a, can I get a motion to approve the recommendation for the committee?
A motion.
Move out of Schmelsing, is there a second?
I can.
Second, about a Miguel hard, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving, say I.
I.
Posed. Oh, sorry, let me tell you, well, let's do, so a roll call vote, there's too many people. All right, you do a roll call, please.
Other woman Bukovic. Alderman Doherty.
Yes.
Alderman Galhard.
Yes.
Alderman Bailey.
Yes.
Alderman Schmalsling.
Yes.
Alderwoman Shaw.
Oh.
A vote of four to one to one. Motion carries, all right, thank you. Uh, next item J, appointment member to the North Shore Fire Rescue Board of Directors and North Shore Water Commission. This is pretty easy. My alternate on the board of directors of the fire department is the city administrator, that's not Darrell anymore, that's Carl, so it's appointing him to that. And the water commission, Charlie is appointed as our representative on the water commission, the alternate is the city administrator. So that's not Darrell anymore, that's Carl, so can I get a motion to approve Carl being appointed? Bottom and Bailey, second about a woman Shaw, any discussion? All in favor, I. I pose motion carries. Next is the the resolution review and approve declaring the month of June 2022 as LGBTQ plus pride month. That was presented by Bailey, you want to tell us about your resolution?
So this is a similar resolution to last year, 2021's Pride Month resolution. Just honoring the, you know, lives of all LGBTQ plus individuals.
Question? I get a motion.
A vote.
Or is there a second?
I can.
I can about him and Schmelsing. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the resolution for LGBTQ plus pride month, please say I.
I.
Motion. Next is item L, this is ordinance, review and approve repealing portions of Title 10. It has to do with motor vehicles and traffic affecting Bay Shore Town Center, I'll turn it over to the city administrator.
But the attached ordinance does three things, it, since the streets in Bay Shore community are no longer public, they are private. We are removing regulations for inline skating and play vehicles, which is 10.1.59C. Also amending Schedule D, which is vehicles required to stop, so essentially it eliminates. Also amending Schedule D, which is vehicles required to stop, so essentially it eliminates the stop sign regulations from the Bay Shore street area. And then Schedule R to eliminate the speed limit regulations that we have in Bay Shore as well. Chief, is that the cover everything?
Yep, that's correct.
All right. Questions? Yep, Alderman Vukovich. Microphone, please.
And speed and we don't have to stop and we can don't have, we couldn't get tickets then, is that?
You can ride skateboards in there?
Yes, you can if they let you, no, it, there are certain violations that we still can enforce on private property. Reckless driving, operating well intoxicated. But that wouldn't release you from being civilly liable if you were to cause an accident.
I know, I was just asking if me and my skateboard can go and that's all.
You can skateboard.
All right, any other questions? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the ordinance, please?
A move.
Second, Alderman Gelhard, seconded by Alderman Doherty, any discussion? All in favor, I? I pose no. Motion carries. And then the la- last item is now a new item M, and that was the move from the consent agenda. This is authorization for Alderman Vukovich to travel to the National League of Cities, not to exceed two thousand dollars. So turn it over to staff for your recommendation.
Essentially, this item would allow Alder, Alderperson Vukovich to attend the National League of Cities Conference in Kansas City, Missouri. Not to exceed two thousand dollars. We put it on the consent agenda because I believe she's attended this conference in the past. And any travel out of state does require council approval.
Any question?
Will she be skateboarding?
Let me clarify.
Cheaper than a plane ticket.
I want to clarify. I was part of the league board, so most of my stuff was paid for when I went to the national. Now I am not part of the board, but I think it's important that somebody represents, so I will, I want to go to do it again for this year and.
Hold on, Michelle.
I have no objections to her attending, because I know she has attended in the past, but for educational purposes, how is this being paid for in the budget because of the fact, I know when she originally started going for for going to the the cities one, if I get that correct. It's a lot of it depending upon the rest of us not utilizing the funds that were allocated for us during budget time. And it was a difference of what we didn't use that was able to support. What goes to onto this, excuse me, onto this item, so it's for educational purposes and I like to know if every one of us happen to utilize our funds for the convention this year for league. What budget item is this coming out of and what's going, what is it going to affect?
That would be a question. By the way, the way the line item is, is there is a set amount of money for travel for members of the council. It doesn't mean that each person gets X number of dollars, it means that there's a line item. We've never exhausted that in the past and that's why this was put on the consent agenda. Because when Carl asked me, I said, we've never exhausted that item, but that is a good question. If everyone here were to decide to go to the League of Wisconsin municipalities, got conference convention later this year, we would utilize that amount of money. Because it's based on all of us going to the league. And if we don't go, that's why there's always money left over, because usually a handful go.
There's also four thousand dollars in the budget for myself to attend training and conferences. I will not come close to that, there will be well over two thousand dollars in excess funds for that, that can be accessed for that purposes as well.
Thank you, so I just, again, it's more so for educational purposes for the new people on here. Because like I said, I have no objection, because I know she does a wonderful job. But I just wanted to make sure everyone knew where it's coming from, if we happen to spend our portion that's been allocated as a line item for each one of us.
Just wanted to get clarifications, I thought it wasn't just for travel, it was for any type of allowance? Is is that true, is there a separate line item just for the, for travel?
All I am aware of is the six hundred thousand dollar for allowance, six hundred dollars per person, sorry, per alderperson per year.
Okay, so that's for anything, it could be travel for a conference, because I've used it for that and I've I've used it other years where I have utilized it for the league, I've, I think I bought this shirt with the money as well. So I I just think it's it's good that we have this, yeah, it's the shirt off my back, that's what the city's paying for. But but I think it's a, it's good that we just recognize that if someone's going this year, maybe, you know, if someone has interest in doing something larger, maybe we consider that for future years and just make that something that we can talk about as a, as a council. I'm not going to the league this year, so I'm fine and I I think I got enough T-shirts, so I'm good for now.
And the other item it's been used for, when I first became on council, I utilize it to mail to my constituents because we had the natural landscaping issues in my district, so we wanted to make sure that was covered. So we had to make sure everyone that was involved in that had an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, I, just to echo that, I've, I do a hand delivered item because mailing's very, as we just heard, expensive. So at one point I thought I'd get toner, but that would have to be itemized separately according to the prior city administrator, have to keep like the toner separate and not use it for, I'm like.
Or you just send the document to city hall and they run the copies for you and you just come pick them up and then you go.
That that would be perfect, I might try that, so. But anyways, yeah, so I guess I'm just saying, let's have a certain pool, let's let's use it as we see fit according across the entire council.
I I don't have any objection to Tamika going, I just didn't want it to jeopardize any funds that each individual alderman would get to use, you know. You know, on a annual basis, so. And a recommendation I'm going to make for staff as you're working on the budget for next year. Perhaps there should be a line in there, since we are members of the National League of Cities. There there should probably be a line item in there that we would have a representative from Glendale at the NLC each year. Because Alderman Vukovich has now started this this regularly, she's gone four times representing Glendale. And so, you know, I I think we we are engaged at a level now that we have, we were not historically, so.
Thank you, I have started the budget process, so I will, I made a note of that tonight and I will put it in there first thing tomorrow.
Okay. All right, so any other discussion? Can I get a motion then to approve? Move by Alderman Shaw, second by Alderman Doherty, all those in favor, I? I posed, motion carries. And lastly, commission committee, board and staff reports. I will start this time. The ICC met earlier today here in Glendale. And so I want to thank our staff for helping to organize the lunch and also for setting up this whole room. We had socially distanced chairs, we had a huge hollow square for the members of the ICC. And I was reelected to another three year term on the MMSD Commission today at our meeting, so. So that's my report there, the North Shore Fire Department would be meeting tomorrow morning, there is not a meeting this month, they did cancel it for lack of agenda items, so that's the only reports I've got and now I'm going to go to the clerk.
Absentee ballots go out next week on the twenty-third.
Thank you, chief.
We have a police commission meeting next on the twenty-second coming up. I think I stole Tamika's thunder.
I'll go to the city administrator.
The only I have is we've handed out automatic maps, if you didn't pick one up before the meeting, I left them on the counter, there's I think three or four of them left, so pick them up, they are much more clear than we've seen them in the past. So I've also asked our engineers to, for the electronic files of these, to put them on our website. Because they're much better.
Awesome. The attorney?
Just a very few brief updates, the property over on Navajo Drive that we had originally were, that was the the problem property over there has now formally changed hands. And again, there's a sheriff sale on July eighteenth. And so the current owner who took it over, F Street, has sent been very responsive to working with the people in the neighborhood, they sent such crew over there to clean up the the yard and do some landscaping and and just kind of clean it up and 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 secure it, secure it and property is.
Like, please.
Property will then be pulled and there will be permits, that'll be collaboratively on that process with the new, with the new owner, so looking forward to that. The Hubbard Street property, we successfully, the the city is now the proud owner of that property over on Hubbard Street, which helps in the area that to be redeveloped and everything went smoothly on that. And then the, we had oral argument the Thursday before Memorial Day on the open records lawsuit over the liquor license, the application request and the judge Foley had said he was hoping to have a decision to us by the following week, which we have not gotten yet, so we'll have that soon, so just a few updates.
Right, thank you. Now I'm going to do a little different out of order, I'm going to go to one first. Alderman Vukovich, six.
Music and the Glenn will be meeting hopefully this Wednesday to just review and make sure we're on track with everything and we do have all five contracts signed, so we we definitely have all five bands. Like to thank Attorney Nathan for taking care of back and forth questions on the contract to make sure we did do it correctly. Thursday morning, the North Shore Library Board meeting, I will not be able to attend because I have to work. So I don't know who does attend at this point, but I saw that Teresa Seem is now as the secretary of the North Shore Library for at least representing Glendale. And that's all I have at this point.
Who?
Anything to report tonight?
Fourth of July, for those who haven't signed up yet to volunteer, if you're in town, please do so. Also get the word out, we are, we've already kind of scrapped our own alcohol sales, we will be having the brick back to sell alcohol only. We have a new main food vendor. We lost one of our other food vendors due to some timing on contracts, they didn't have staffing. And since we didn't have our contract signed yet with them, they are, they were able to kind of reneg on that, so we are struggling with getting staff and volunteers. Next thing we'd lose is our ticket sales, where we would sell tickets to buy food and such, and the reason we're doing that is to make sure that we are whole in our ten percent off the top revenues, which we feel like we haven't always gotten in the past. Though we really want to make sure that we can make this work and the other part is if there's anyone else who might still be interested in doing some type of sponsorship, please send it over to Becca over at Welcome to Glendale or North Shore Chamber, I guess is what they're called now. Because we are also a little short on our fundraising this year, so we're short everywhere this year, so please do what you can to help.
Nothing to report tonight. Nothing to report tonight. All right, that concludes all of our reports and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Alderman Gelhard moves, second by Shaw. All right, all those in favor of adjourning, I? I pose.
Which one of you guys want to?